Okay, here we go again. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, August 19th. If you please join Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to consider the business of our city, we ask that you guide us in our deliberations. We ask that you bless all of those that are present here. And we ask a special blessings for those who are in harm's way every day on behalf of us in our city and in our country. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much for that. It looks like we're all here tonight. I just want to welcome you all back. It's nice to have us all together all. We did have one short meeting a week ago with some business we had to take care of, but for the most part, you've been off for a while. And you're all looking rested and smiling. So I figure this is going to be a good council year. So with that, everybody is in attendance. There is no communication tonight. And now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda items. We do have two speaker cards. So I need to say that the council will listen to your comments, and I'm sure you already know this process, but I need to repeat it to you, and may take any one of the following. They may respond to criticism. So if it isn't any type of criticism, we will not be responding to you. And of course, this is by state statute. We have no choice on this. If we did, I think some of us would change this. Number two is we request that staff investigate and report on the matter, and we request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. You each have three minutes. The yellow light, there'll be a yellow light, and then the buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. And I do make you stick to that time. So I hope you've timed your speech. Before you begin speak and identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. And we do appreciate you, before you come up, coming forth to the council and expressing your concern. So the first one is Bill Zednik, Lights on Estrella Parkway.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bill Zednik, 1-8227 San Alberta Lane. Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to talk a little bit about the lights that we have on Estrella Parkway. I spoke with a couple council members before, and certainly this is a convoluted situation that's underhand. I know that you guys are going to review this in September. I'd like you to consider a couple things, please, during your consideration. One of them would be that precedent that we have already set for these lights as far as who's paying the electric bill. I would also like you to consider such things that APS and AT&amp;T has done in the past. Whenever making changes to Estrella Mountain Ranch, they typically come up with two or three proposals, and they bring it to the residents so that they can hear the voice of the residents. I know that Estrella is kind of far away, but they are still residents of Goodyear. And I think that it would go a long way to ask what their opinions are and to offer some different options out there. That's really all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming before us. The next one is, again, on the Oriental Lights, Marge Sharp. Marge?
My name is Marge Sharp. My address is 13388 South 186th Avenue in Goodyear. Mayor Lord, council members, and audience. My request is of the council. And I sent some correspondence to Lisa Von Skow, who is the manager up at Estrella Mountain Ranch. And so this is, I'm going to read what I sent her, and then I'm going to read her response. But this is basically a request to the council. My request to City Council will be to hold a community EMR meeting with resident taxpayers prior to formalizing an MOU with the EJC Board. I feel that transparency is part of goodwill towards residents of Goodyear and Estrella Mountain Ranch. It is important for residents to understand what their monetary contributions will be for now and the future, and how that will be determined. And to Lisa, it was please consider coordinating with the City of Goodyear to extend to residents a town meeting to discuss a draft MOU prior to formalization of any said document. I await your response. And this was her response. Thank you for your suggestion. If the city agrees, I will be happy to facilitate such a meeting of the residents. I will reach out to them, meaning you all, tomorrow to see if they are amiable to such a meeting here at Star Point with the residents, per your suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming before us. And are there any more cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city cur? Please read the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.7 by title only, please.
6.1, approve draft minutes from a special meeting and a regular meeting held on June 24th, 2013, a regular meeting held on July 1st, 2013, and a regular meeting held on July 8th, 2013. Item 6.2, approve a request from Michael N. Somerton, agent applicant for Scribs AZ Store 1 LLC for a new Series 12 liquor license, number 12079554, for Mr. Scribs Pizza located at 1380 North Litchfield Road, Suite K3A. Item 6.3, approve a request from Randy Nations, agent applicant for 99 cents only stores of California Incorporated for a new Series 10 liquor license, number 10076421, for 99 cents only store number 231, located at 13540 West Van Buren Street. Item 6.4, adopt ordinance 13-1283, amending Chapter 7 of the Goodyear City Code by amending and replacing subsection 7-1-4B restrictions on keeping animals and section 7-2-5 license fee for dogs, providing for severability and an effective date. Item 6.5, adopt resolution 13-1565, approving the mutual termination of lease with the Cancer Treatment Centers of America Incorporated, an Illinois corporation, CTC, effective July 21st, 2013, for the office space located at 14415 West Van Buren Street, Suite 102, Goodyear, Arizona, and authorizing the city manager to execute the mutual termination of lease. Item 6.6, appoint Councilmember Cheryl and Holman as representative and Councilmember Wally Campbell as the alternate representative to Maricopa County's Human Services Department Advisory Committee for FY 2013, 2014. Item 6.7, approve the funding for the purchase order for fiscal year 2014 for the Waste Management and Corporation contract in the amount of $4,458,165.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman Stip?
Mayor, I'd like to see us vote separately on a four and a half million dollar contract and not do it under consent.
Which item?
Which would be item 6.7. And I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that before the meeting, but it's an awful big number to just throw in the consent. And I'd like to see that pulled and doubled separately.
All right. Thank you.
I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that, but it's a contract that's budgeted amount. That's within this year's budget, so that's why I don't have a problem. But I can understand Councilmember Stip's issue, and I don't mind pulling it.
So he'd like a presentation. You're on a presentation on that bill.
Very short, just an overview for anyone who may be listening and see it. I think we, at least seven of us, know what that is.
It's fine. Absolutely. Well, there's no other than...
I'm sorry. I have one question on 6.3 for Maureen. Correct. Maureen?
And Councilman Osborne is speaking. I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't announce your name. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask for some clarification. We've had a lot of different liquor licenses within the city and grocery stores, restaurants, and, you know, I understand them. This is an odd one to me for the 99 cent store. And I'm just wondering, because I don't know how liquor licenses really work. When you look at a city, when the board takes these different applications into consideration, do they look at how many liquor licenses are within an area? Are any of those considerations, or are they just, if there's no history to this company, it's more or less stamped approval?
I believe, I'm not sure I can answer that completely. I think that's going to be a state liquor license question. What happens is, the council will approve that, or, you know, I should back up. Whatever the council recommends for a liquor license, then that's sent to the state board, and then the state will decide if it's going to be approved or not. So I really can't answer that question. I can get back with you on how they make that decision, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I will say in the past, for the majority of them, if we said no, it said yes to the state. And basically, we really have no control over it. So...
Oh, I know that. I just didn't know.
I think where we have the control is when there's, you know, a crime.
Right, when there's some other things going on with the liquor license.
Or something that helps. But, I mean, I think it's a good question.
Can you for the future?
Sure, I sure can.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
But not to take it off the agenda.
No.
All right. Okay, could I please then have a motion from 6.1 to 6.6, and a second, please, to approve the consent agenda?
We got 6.4. Is it coming?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, 6.7. Never mind.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, 6.1 through 6.6, as read.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear the motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauritano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Could I have a pencil that works? I have two of them up here a moment. Just a pen or anything, it would be most appreciated. Oh, thank you, Joe. I have it. Thank you very much. This one is not working very well. All right, so we're going to look at 6.7. And do we have someone to make a presentation?
Yes, Councilmember Mark Siemens. Mayor, excuse me.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Evening, afternoon.
We'll take afternoon. It's okay.
As long as it's good.
My name is Mark Siemens. I'm the new Environmental Services Manager. I just started this week. I've been with...
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Been with the City of Goodyear for about two years now, but this is my first council meeting, so. The question on the table is the cost of this, I believe?
No, just if you can, for the last three weeks, I've been saying in 20 words or less, but I realize it's going to take a little longer than 20. But just kind of give a quick overview, our contractual obligation as we move forward. So anybody who's unfamiliar with this knows why we're just dropping four and a half million dollars.
Basically, maybe they missed the presentation when the Waste Management came before us, and we discussed this deeply, the subject, when they were here.
Well, Mayor Lord and Councilman Stip, what we're doing tonight is bringing forth a purchase order for the annual contract that we have with Waste Management. And really, what we're dealing with tonight is the escalator that was provided in a prior council agenda. So that's the purpose of this presentation. And basically, any, by resolution, any contract over $500,000 has to be brought before council. So that's what we're doing tonight.
And this is for our annual trash service?
Annual trash service, yes.
We have a long-term contract with Waste Management, which goes for how long?
2016.
Yeah, through 2016. And this is just our annual installment.
Correct.
Paid for with sanitation.
Sanitation, please.
Perfect.
Right.
Thanks for coming forward.
Vice Mayor?
And I think, just real quick, before you go, I think I heard it, but also, the contract with them has specifically spelled out what those escalators are that's addressed. It's not something that's negotiated each year. And those escalators are applied, and that is in place until 2016.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And at that time, do they have any opportunities to add on to that, or is that bid after 2016?
It'll be bid after 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, could I have a motion, please, and a second for 6.7?
Second.
I didn't hear who. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Lauritano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauritano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the business. 7.1 is to designate a council member to serve as an acting mayor in the absence of the mayor and the vice mayor from August 27th to the 30th, 2013. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, then, do I hear a motion to appoint an acting mayor in a second?
I'd like to nominate Sherry Lauritano as acting mayor.
Second.
There is a motion by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, and a second by Councilman Stip, open for council discussion. Only discussion, thank you very much, so that we're able to attend the event. So we appreciate that. So all we do is say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Sherry. So we'll go to 7.2. The item on business is to consider approving a request for the preliminary plat from Sunbelt Holdings to subdivide approximately 190 acres into 578 single-family residential lots for a development known as La Privada. Brett Birmingham to present.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord, members of the council. This preliminary plat has some history, so I'm going to briefly provide a little bit of background for you. And it starts back in 2006, when the City Council authorized the annexation of La Privada and approved a pre-annexation development agreement. Also, the final planned area development and the preliminary plat for La Privada were approved at that time as well, in 2006. Final plats were then submitted for review, but were never pursued to approval due to the severe downturn in the economy and the housing market. So the previously approved preliminary plat for La Privada has since expired. And just a quick note, it is anticipated that a revised development agreement will be executed by the owner and the city prior to approval of any final plats for this development. And along those lines, wanted to note that it has been determined that adequate water and wastewater treatment will be provided for this development. So now, zooming into the site here, the subject property, La Privada, the land uses surrounding this subject property include, to the north, the Amber Meadows Development, and also, to the east, unincorporated Maricopa County residential lots that are about 1 to 5 acres in size. And so those areas are zoned rural residential. To the south, you have the Yuma Road alignment and the proposed Basia Ridge, also called Van Lewin Farms Development. And to the west, Perryville Road and the Town of Buckeye Municipal Planning Boundary. Okay, this is a relatively large area. It's 198 acres. Sunbelt Holdings purchased the property in 2010, and is requesting approval of the preliminary plat, which proposes subdividing the 198 acres into 578 single-family lots. So there are five phases to be developed, excuse me, there are five residential parcels to be developed in two separate phases. There are two lot sizes proposed, 60-foot wide lots and 70-foot wide lots. So the net density of this development would be 3.1 dwelling units per acre. And also, wanted to note, this area here, the project is reserving a portion of land for a school site that is shared by the La Privada and Amber Meadows Developments, with each planning to donate half of the needed acreage for this school site. Also, wanted to just quickly mention Liberty Elementary School District, also Buckeye Unified High School District is also associated with this development, and the applicant has contacted those districts to make sure that accommodations would be made. And now, I'd like to move on to landscape exhibit. I think this exhibit's a little bit easier to see where the parks and some of the trees and landscaping are. This exhibit was provided with the final PAD, but I think it'll give you a better idea for what you're seeing with the parks. Previously, this subdivision was proposed to be gated and to have private streets. So the most significant change from the previously approved preliminary plat is the conversion of the private streets to public streets, which will have public right-of-way and be maintained by the City of Goodyear. The streets in this subdivision include a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk, providing a five-foot-wide landscape strip, which includes shade trees between the sidewalk and the curb. So within this subdivision, there is approximately 42 acres, about 20% of open space. And each of the parcels you'll see are designated around a local park with a variety of recreational amenities. So there are a total of six parks, and there are a lot of different amenities being proposed by Sunbelt Holdings. One other thing that I needed to mention was stipulation number 17. I apologize for the late change. The applicant has proposed that we modify stipulation number 17. And also, our city attorney has also handed me a minor revision, too, to make sure the wording is correct. And the concern that the city has been working on with the applicant is to make sure that this detached landscape strip is properly taken care of by the homeowner or the HOA and not the city. I think the city wants to make sure that the proper landscaping is installed correctly. And then, what we're trying to make sure is that the homeowner will take care of it. And if the homeowner does not take care of it, the HOA has the authority to step in and provide maintenance. So the, I'm going to read the starting right here. It says, "The maintenance of the landscaping between the sidewalk and back of curb on local streets shall be the responsibility of the homeowner." And then I'm going to add, the attorney has asked us to add, "of the immediately adjacent lot first," and then the HOA, if the homeowner fails to maintain this area properly. So we would ask that that stipulation be modified accordingly. And that is consistent with the city's standards. So in conclusion, the proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the La Privada planned area development and the City of Goodyear general plan. The proposed development will also be compatible with the surrounding area. The Planning Commission has provided a recommendation of approval, subject to the stipulations in your staff report. And we would just note, which includes the revision to stipulation 17. And so this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have. We also have Mr. Bob Bambauer with Sunbelt available to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. I would like a motion in a second. And the person making the motion, the council member making the motion, would you add the addition, the stipulation, to 17 for me? 1.7? And, I'm sorry, revised stipulation to 17. That's the exhibit. Do I hear a motion?
I move, Mayor, that we adopt the revised stipulation with the addition.
Yeah, stipulation 17.
Stipulation 17, with the addition that the attorney put the language in.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Campbell, and a second by, I always want to call you Vice Mayor. I just can't get over that. Councilman Osborne, with the stipulation that has been directed by the lawyer. So do we want to read that out again, the stipulation? Do we want to add that in one more time or not? Hello?
Revision?
I'm just asking, in that motion, does she have to spell that out? Did she spell it out clearly?
We're good.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't get through this and have to start all over again. Thank you very much. So, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Can you put that map that you have back up there again, real quick?
Okay.
The arterial, it looks like there's some outside arterial streets for this development. That's correct? Is that correct? So there'll be landscaping along those arterial streets. HOA will own that area and be responsible?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, and Councilman, Vice Mayor Pizzillo. The HOA will own and maintain all the private open space, the trails, community amenities, as well as arterial and collector roadway right-of-way landscaping. They will maintain those.
So the answer, that's then yes, then? Okay. On the water, again, you had mentioned that we do have enough water to supply to this development. But I do recall, and I talked to you earlier, that we had put something in our ordinance in which there are some time limits on these plats, so they just don't kind of go on forever and forever and forever, you know? So that if they don't do some type of action, then that reverts, and you've got to renew. What is that timeframe?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, the city recently updated the regulations regarding plats and when they expire. Now, preliminary plats expire within one year. If there's no activity, they can be extended if the applicant can show that work is being done. Also, final plats, now, we make sure that engineering improvement plans are started and completed in conjunction with final plats. And final plats will expire in three months if they are not recorded. And the engineering plans will have to be completed, and plans for improvements will have to be in place prior to final plats being able to be recorded.
One last question. Retention basins and other, within this development, what typically is the guarantee that the developer gives to the, because typically, when they're done, it gets transferred title over to the HOA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is the guarantee that the HOA has as far as the retention basins that the developer will make whole? Is there a year, two-year typically? How does that work?
Yes, I'll defer that question to the city engineer.
Okay.
Thank you, because that's just been kind of a hot subject lately, basin. So I think we want a little confirmation on it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. There's a five-year warranty period on retention basins. In other words, from the time they're completed, if there's an issue related to stormwater disposal within that five-year window, the developer is required to come back and fix it.
What I'm looking for, and I appreciate that with the five years, what I'm appreciating is that title may be transferred, just like when you buy a car, prior to that five years. Do we have some type of assurance that if, within the five years, work has to be done, it won't be passed on to the HOA, the developer will foot that cost?
We will retain a bond. We will hold the bond for five years. So we would have that as a guarantee, even if the title's been transferred.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
And that is in the industry, five years? Because some people have often said to me, they thought that was such a long time before the requirement was completed. And so, I'm gathering that's an industry average. Is that correct?
Mayor, I'm not... Mayor, I'm not sure that it's industry average, it's something we adopted in Goodyear because of the issues we were having. I can't speak for other cities though.
Okay, all right.
So, just to be clear then, if within those five years, they will absorb those costs and will not pass that on to the HOA even though they'll have title?
Correct. We won't release the bond until the improvements are made.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Laura Tano?
Yes, I just wanna say it's a very nice plan, and I really like how it's drawn out as a neighborhood, with the trees, it looks like trees and bushes between the sidewalk and the roadway. My question is, there's several parts, I thought we had something in our zoning ordinance, you can help me, that you're not supposed to have like a road teeing into a house for the headlights?
And headlights in the window.
Yeah, and there's a lot of these that look like, and I don't know if that's gonna be solved by the way it's laid out, the houses, or the trees are going to minimize that, if you could help me.
Yeah, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Laura Tano, the applicant has, in the final PAD for this development, well, first, let me answer your question about the headlight intrusion. We still have the ability to stipulate with final plat that the garage portion of the house be located on a certain side, so we do have the ability to move that, so headlight intrusion into the house isn't being impacted. The applicant has provided a detailed final PAD which shows that the trees will be located in specific areas so that driveways can be accommodated as well, and also so that homeowners will clearly know which trees are theirs and which trees they need to take care of.
Did that answer your question?
Well, I guess my question was, so you're gonna work with them to make sure the garages, just the layout of the house where it sits on the lot is going to not cause that headlight intrusion and the additional foliage that is planted there, will that also help?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Laura Tano, yes. Typically, when the final plat comes forward, oftentimes we can note those restrictions on a final plat, but we do try to minimize those, and they're, it's a recommendation in the city's design guidelines that we try to avoid headlight intrusion as often as possible, but we still have the ability to make sure that they can place the garage on a certain portion of the lot.
Okay. Which really is better in the final plat, 'cause it's more visible.
Yeah, I just couldn't tell with just the little boxes.
These you really can't tell, the little squares, but when they finally present that to us. Councilwoman Stip, did you have a question?
I did. Excuse me, Brett, while you've got that same photo up. Struggling in looking at the little electronic version in this, where are the main roads leading in and out of?
The entries, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I'll get to the second part of my question, I think, when you answer that.
Sure, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip, there are five access points into the subdivision. There are two from Harrison Street, one here, one here. There are three from 183rd Avenue, two here, and then one here.
So, we're cutting Harrison off from connecting to 181st? Is that correct? Is that how I'm seeing that?
Correct.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're gonna put a school theoretically in the property where 183rd intersects with Harrison. Am I reading that correctly? In parcel six? And then what's shared on the other side as well?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, this exhibit tries to show some of the adjacent Amber Meadows information that we have as well.
Right, so the school's gonna be where 183rd and Harrison intersect, right there?
In parcel six.
In parcel six and the one next to it, correct? It, I'm really worried about ten pounds potatoes in a five-pound bag there. That is, it seems to be a relatively small area for us to try to squeeze a school in the middle of two very heavily populated residential areas with perhaps not some, not enough space. We're already dealing with that in historic Goodyear, and they've had to undergo a significant campus transformation to make that work. That's my only concern about this particular area, and this stuff in parcel one is really only accessible from one area, and that's 183rd Avenue. We seem to have reduced accessibility from outside of this subdivision by completely eliminating any access off of 181st. I think that's a concern. I'm hoping that engineers work that out from an accessibility standpoint. There's essentially one way in, and the only other way into the, all the homes in parcel one, the only other way in there is to access it through parcel two. It seems to be an accessibility issue. I don't know if we heard from Public Safety on this or not.
Joe, when you talk about this, can you tell us the size of that school? I mean, what are they estimating, the student population?
Mayor, I believe it's a fifteen-acre combined site. During the PAD, when it went through back in 2005, there was a lot of concern about not having access to 181st Avenue from the residents in the county. So, that's why the configuration...
Oh, they didn't want access?
They did not want access from this subdivision to go through that area. And in deference to that concern, the layout ended up being designed the way it is. It has two points of access, so from that standpoint, it is adequately served from a police and fire perspective. If one gets shut off, you can get there through the other one. Obviously, you know, if there were opportunity for additional connections, it might be worthwhile, but I don't think we see it as a major problem.
Okay, thanks.
Joe, I have a question, sorry. Mayor, may I have a question?
Yes.
Did I hear you say that there's fifteen acres for the school?
I believe that's the...
Is that both of them, or just one?
That's combined.
Combined, okay, and that should be adequate for an elementary school, wouldn't you think?
That's what was indicated with, from Liberty School District.
Okay. And it would simply be an elementary, not a middle school?
I believe, you know, I believe Liberty uses a K through eight.
K through eight, okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Whether, yes, Vice Mayor Fazillo?
Just as a follow-up on the school, I can tell you, there's a school in Palm Valley that my girls go to, it's kind of a nightmare drop-off and drop-off just because of, when you got an elementary school, you got parents dropping off kids even though you have, you know, buses going in there. Just wanna make sure, when that's designed, that's not gonna be an issue, because the one over in Palm Valley, and I think you know which one I'm talking about, that's a mess, okay, for the kids coming in and out and the parents dropping them off, so try to avoid that in this parcel six. I don't know how you do that with the parents coming in and coming out from a direction, but yeah, it can be quite interesting for elementary schools, because again, you've got parents dropping their kids off, so.
Mayor Lord, Council, Vice Mayor Fazillo, we do our best at times to locate these sites centrally to residential neighborhoods so kids can walk to school. Unfortunately, in these days and times, a lot of parents opt not to have their children walk for a variety of reasons, whether it's the weather or safety concerns.
I think I prefer, rather than on this, you know, facing the main street there and all the dangers and things, and so it's gonna be inconvenient, and there's two times a day that this is going to be inconvenient, but I don't know how you can make a neighborhood school and not...
Well, there's ways to design it to minimize that, and it does have frontage on Harrison and 183rd, which are both configured and collector roadway configurations, so, but that's certainly something we'll take a look at during the design.
I just asked you to look at the flow pattern, because I've seen one that doesn't work real well, no matter how they try to work it, so.
Mayor? Councilwoman Stip?
Joe, I was trying to get my head around the objection to an access off of 181st. That came from residents in the county?
That's correct, sir. Yeah, that was when the PAD went through the process and went through citizen review and all that, that's when those objections were made known. I believe there's even a stipulation about the homes along that eastern size being of a certain, not the homes, but the lots being of a certain size to blend in with the adjacent area. It certainly wasn't driven from staff's recommendation, but that's why it's configured the way it is.
And I realize this is preliminary, and there's still room for change before we get to final.
There's some room, yes, sir.
I personally would like to see that Harrison go all the way through to 181st and provide another access in. I'm not entirely bought off on this personally, and I realize I'm only one of seven, but that's my concern, and I'm sorry that there's, we've done everything we absolutely can to try to please our neighbors, but at some certain point in time, we've gotta make a subdivision that works. And I think we bottlenecked this one intersection with the elementary school and all of these homes that are gonna be in here, we're gonna be, ten years from now, the city council sitting here is gonna be listening to residents complain about the situation in that area, and I think we're setting ourselves up for future failure by not extending Harrison all the way through. So, that's just my opinion.
Councilman Osborne?
Just a comment, first of all, thank you Brett for answering my questions, I appreciate that. And Cherry, I was looking for some of those same boilerplate type of stipulations and realized they're coming later. But I just wanted to thank Sunbelt Holdings for coming to Goodyear and starting us off again on some new homes, and I appreciate the trail system, and as I mentioned to Brett earlier, since this is kind of a new beginning for this area for us, I would like to remind staff for future developments that, you know, we have in place an open space and trail system that Goodyear's supposed to have, and I'd like to see all the other subdivisions that are gonna be following this to have those connected trail systems that years ago, we had said as a city we wanted to see, so that twenty years from now, everybody goes, "Ooh, isn't that cool? City of Goodyear has trails that connect all through everything." So, I just wanted to remind you of that, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I just wanna say, it's nice to see this come before us. We haven't, and you can see by some of the questions, they haven't really seen, too many have come before where they had to look at the plat and everything that goes with it, so this'll be great for the council that we're gonna be back in this activity again, so be prepared, your night might be a little longer that night, but we appreciate it. So, with the conversation that's been going, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Nay.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
I mean, six one, I'm sorry.
Everybody got that, six one? Okay. Let's go to seven point three, we'll consider approving the use funds of, for the purchase of a fire pumper truck from the fleet replacement budget. Mark Flynn to present?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, it's a pleasure to be before you again this evening. As an informational item, we're coming back to you this evening to talk about the acquisition of a planned fire pumper truck, number three. In addition to my presentation this evening, Chief Luizy can address any questions from an operational perspective for the Fire Department. I also have Charles Schneider with me from the Fleet and Equipment Management Division who might be able to field any of those questions from a technical perspective. We went through a formal solicitation process in order to potentially acquire up to three pumper trucks for a planned replacement of trucks number one fifty, two forty-four, and two eighty-four. Those were the planned targets for replacement within the existing fleet. Bids were received in July of 2012, and six firms responded to that request for solicitation. An award was made to Kovach Mobile Equipment Company in November of 2012, and the specification allowed us to purchase up to three individual trucks over three consecutive fiscal years. That fourth, that third truck is planned in fiscal 2014. A pre-built conference, delivery to Goodyear is anticipated here this October, but a pre-built conference on those first two trucks was held in Pennsylvania. Nesquahoning, Pennsylvania is the manufacturing plant for KME, for Kovach Mobile Equipment, was held in 2013, late, began in late January, we continued into early February for trucks number one and two. Fiscal fourteen did include, we had budgeted and anticipated the acquisition of truck number three within fiscal fourteen, and again, those replacement targets were based upon the aging equipment within the existing fleet, trucks number one fifty, two forty-four, and two eighty-four, and those remain at present are targets of opportunity for the replacement of all three. This informational update to the city council is based on the fact that we're approaching that $500,000 limit. The purchase price for truck number three with tax included is about $465,000. Not quite at that $500,000 threshold, but because of the value of the expenditure, we did wanna make you aware that our desire was to proceed with that replacement. If we're provided approval here this evening, we'll proceed and issue a purchase order, requisition and purchase order through the procurement office tomorrow, and then we anticipate the production of truck number three would begin in September of 2013, and it's anticipated to be a nine-to-a-ten-month build, so we would expect to see delivery of the third truck to occur in Goodyear somewhere around May or June of 2014. In-service would occur shortly thereafter as we add the parts and pieces and we take care of the local fit-up components related to that truck. $465,000 is based upon the existing quotes that we've received from Kovach, from that formal solicitation, and then the local components, the branding, the graphics that we place on the truck, as well as the mobile communication equipment. Right now, we're anticipating that to be in the neighborhood of about $15,000 per unit. Total price is anticipated to be in the neighborhood of $480,000. Replacing the third truck in fiscal fourteen allows for us to improve a little bit of operational efficiency. You may recall from some of our standards within the fleet group, we're shooting for a ninety percent in-service rating, and our numbers, while still above that rating, have begun to fall slightly over the last couple of years. That's because of the age that we're seeing on those trucks, their cost of operation, as well as the time to facilitate some of those repairs. The increased service availability or the ability to hold that availability is the way our commitment rolls to the Fire Department, to allow them to ultimately perform their tasks on behalf of the entire community. We also see that the improved response time, because that in-service availability is an offshoot valued for the City of Goodyear's Fire Department. Oops, apologize. A midpoint, a mid-cycle inspection in the construction component occurred in Pennsylvania. A member of the Goodyear Fire Department, as well as the fleet superintendent attended, and were able to actually spend about a day and a half reviewing the two trucks that we currently have under production. These are some photographs that you see from that inspection trip. We're quite pleased with the nature of the progress that's been made on the trucks thus far. We truly believe that we're getting high-quality components and we're getting them at a very reasonable cost, given the bid process that we went through. Kovach mechanical, excuse me, Kovach Mobile Equipment was the low bidder, and through the negotiation process, we were able to assure the quality of the truck that we were receiving, of the trucks. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to address any questions that you may have, and I'll rely on my peers if I need some assistance in that.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anyone that's in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, then could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilwoman Campbell, and a second by Councilwoman Holman, open for council discussion.
I have two questions, if I may, Mayor, and to, will by the addition of these three trucks, will that in fact give us a spare truck somewhere, if we needed it?
The intent or the request of the Fire Department has been to retain at least one, potentially two of those trucks to serve in a spare capacity.
Wonderful.
At present, there are eleven pieces of apparatus that are maintained on behalf of the Goodyear Fire Department, and it's anticipated that one of these three, or two of the, potentially two of these three...
Would be spares.
Would also be retained for that purpose.
Okay, great, and then my last question is, the local fit-up calls, the branding, communications and things, do we by any chance work with Phoenix Fire to get a price break when they do their trucks, that we might get a fleet price with them? Do y'all look into that?
We've certainly done that from the communication standpoint.
Good, okay.
The Fire Department in Goodyear has facilitated that process through Phoenix Fire because of that common communication... of that common communications response that they have.
Right, and, yeah, right, good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. That's great.
The branding though, the graphics that are added, the truck numbers and those pieces, those are done typically through competitive bid is how we've been doing those.
Okay. I didn't know if we could get a good fleet price from someone that does it for all the other fire departments, or what?
Ironically, there's a little bit of uniqueness into the graphics and the branding that go into those. So typically, what we've done is we've put together a solicitation package and then gone out to manufacturers, to suppliers who could address that component locally. We've done that with police patrol vehicles, and we anticipate continuing that process with these fire trucks.
Okay, thanks.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
This company is located out of state?
The manufacturing plant is in Nusquahoning, Pennsylvania. They also have a facility in Southern California.
Okay. Question, says 465 including tax.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know, maybe Larry knows the answer to this, you may know the answer to this. Do they have a privileged tax, Arizona privileged tax license? What I mean is it says including tax. Is that in the 465, or are we going to end up paying use tax on this piece of equipment? Because they don't, aren't collecting the tax, and when it comes in, we've got to follow the use tax, which actually is another, what, 8% to the product?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, the $465,000 is inclusive of the tax, and that's based off of the purchase for the first two trucks. Our bid cost for the truck was $432,000. As we fine-tuned the design and the component, we actually honed in on the exact number, and 465 is that number rounded off based upon my involvement with procurement and finding.
I'm going to ask Larry to come up, because I don't think it's quite answered.
No, it's not.
Sorry, but, thank you, Larry.
Based on what I heard Mark said, I asked Chief Luizy just a couple minutes ago, the FOB on the truck is here. So that makes, this is where the title transfers, so I believe it's taxable in Arizona, and that, we'll follow up for sure. But I think under our code, it's taxed here.
I just want to make sure we don't have a use tax issue where we're adding another 8% on the 465, that's all.
Correct. Understood. I think we're good.
I thought you were more interested that we get the tax here.
I was.
I was going to say, Joe, I like our concern more than yours there.
Well, what happens is if there's a use tax, we're only going to get part of it that's going to go back to the state and-
I'm just, listen, I really appreciate your knowledge, having worked in the manager and finance management, so. Councilman Stipp?
Mark, you alluded to the criteria that you're using for choosing replacement apparatus, et cetera. Do you have the cost per mile differential that's been broken down that says now's the time to replace this versus next year?
I do, sir. We use an asset management system within fleet called Faster. The name of the software is Faster. We began using that system in 2007, and all three of these trucks predate the acquisition of that system. So I have data ranging back to 2007, but I can provide you the total operational costs for those vehicles over the life that we've maintained that asset management system, but I can also give you the actual total cost per mile for our operational components for all three of those vehicles, whichever way you prefer.
Well, to kind of just simplify it, are we, are we dealing with, you know, last year it was $9 a mile, this year it's $10 a mile, we're anticipating $12 a mile the year after? Where are we at in that, in that aspect as we embark on measuring performance in this fiscal year?
The cost per mile, total cost per mile since inception of the software management system for fire truck number 150 is 85 cents per mile in its total cost of operation. Unit 244 is $1.29 per mile, and unit 284 is $1.42 per mile. That's since 2007. Obviously, there were costs incurred prior to that time that I don't have access to those records, but we've begun to track those with the inception of the Faster system. And those are substantially higher than what we're seeing in the newer trucks within the fleet. These are the three oldest trucks within our fleet. The mileage on unit 150, 144,000 miles. Unit 244 is 168,000 miles, and unit number 284 is 124, a little over 124,000 miles. Their in-service dates date back to 1999 for unit 150, 2001, 12, December of 2001 for 244, and December of 2002 for unit 284.
Okay. Final question that I have then, I think goes, gets to the, to the reserve, keeping one, keeping two. It's my understanding from previous discussions on this matter that we are perhaps behind national average on our reserve fleet. I've kind of looked at Chief Luizy standing behind you for either or not or something, that we can handicap ourselves by dispensing with two rather than dispensing only with one. And I hope that we take that in a very serious consideration as the number of stations grow and as our fleet grows without reserve apparatus, then we are back into a customer service issue with nothing to respond and driving around a $1 million ladder truck to respond on EMS calls. So I hope that fleet and the fire work closely together if we approve this tonight to make sure that we've got a adequate reserve as long as they're still meeting the maintenance requirements that you indicate that they are.
That's certainly our intent. Our involvement in providing the information to support services staff within the fire department has been ongoing as we evaluate these three trucks that we're targeting for these phases of replacement. We're also looking at the types of service that we've had to provide on those vehicles, not only looking at the, what the raw numbers tell us, but based on what the mechanics are experiencing, and what the engineers operating the trucks are experiencing, trying to get some of that information to help us make that right decision so we know where that number is falling and then which are the right units.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, we're about ready to vote, and thank you for your presentations. I just want to compliment council on your insightful and thorough questions. I think tonight, some of your responses and questions have been so that we're educating the public in these areas, and we're certainly seeing your expertise in it, and what an advantage for us on the council to have council members like that. So with that, could I have an all-in-favor vote, please, or opposed? I'm sorry, I took your job away. Go ahead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Well, we're almost finished with this council meeting, and look, it's just a few minutes before 7:00. I know you're all thrilled. So does the council have any comments, commendations, reports to report on this evening? I would be disappointed if somebody doesn't speak here.
You can have a report.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I just, as you know, this is my first break. And I took the opportunity, because I am the new kid on the block, to do a lot of reading and to try and catch up to speed with my experienced colleagues. I know I'm not close, but that's what I've been spending an hour or two every day, reading the materials that have been provided to me from staff. But at the same time, I've had the opportunity to do some field trips as well. I went to IBEW to look at their training center, which is very, very impressive. And a conversation I had with them and a question I asked of them if they're working with Westmech. So I took the opportunity to meet with Westmech to see what kind of opportunities are being provided in this CTE-type of arena. And I think the taxpayer money is being very well-spent in that arena. There's some absolutely amazing programs, and I think they're bringing some to Goodyear in the near future that we'll be hearing about as a council. So I think that's very exciting. And I also have had the opportunity, as a result of a contact from the University of Arizona, to work with the University of Chicago through the U of A on an ADA survey validation. And that sounds a little complicated, and it's going to be a little time-consuming, but it's very exciting to have the opportunity to be involved in that. So that's what I've spent my break doing.
Great. We'll be anxious to hear results of that as the training goes on and as the, so, good on you. That's really great. We appreciate that concentration. Anybody else? Yes, I know you're going to say something, because if you didn't, I was going to say something to you. Councilwoman Osborne had a very interesting summer.
I, yes, I can't believe it's already over. First of all, well, first of all, I just wanted to let you know that for the chamber, we have received the tourism study, and we have been dissecting it, and we have some questions. But going forward, we will be presenting some thoughts and plans to the BRATS committee, the Business Retention and Tourism section of the chamber, and, which I know our economic development staff also attends these meetings, so that will be important. Interesting information that's come out on it, and I will let you more, know more as that moves forward. But as most of you know, my summer has been spent in summer school, you know? And actually, as I guess one of the more senior people on this dais, you never stop going to school, Charlene, you just don't. And I will have to say, my experience at Harvard was a lifetime experience, and the people that, you know, I had as my classmates were exceptional. And I hope that the things that I've learned not only will help me be a better person, but will help also our city and our state, because, you know, education's key. And I think that the case studies that I read and was part of, and the debate and the dialogue, you looked at best practices and you looked at worst practices. And so you learn from both of those. So that's been quite an experience. And as I told you, I think a couple weeks ago, Georgia, there was a, one of my professors was a 91-year-old gentleman who was John F. Kennedy's staff assistant. And he, he taught us over and over again about the Constitution and about the things that sometimes we feel are rightful causes to use our authorization and our authority to do really are not the proper thing, because all we're doing is chipping away at our constitutional rights. And so you saw that today when I, I didn't pull the liquor license off.
Yes, that wasn't a constitutional right. Or a state statute, anyway.
There you go. Thank you.
Now, well, congratulations, and the 91-year-old man made me feel very good. So, you know, who knows? I'm not there yet. I may still be here then, who knows? Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Stipp?
Well, we're on the subject of staff assistants, and I realize he's not 91, but I want to publicly send my appreciation to Matt. I was three weeks out of town working, and I had Matt back here keeping me up to date on what was going on and meetings that needed to be scheduled, and it was very, very reassuring to know that there was somebody back here at City Hall that could keep me connected when I needed to be. Matt knew how to get ahold of me and kept the messages flowing, and it made being gone, I mean literally gone and immersed in something else, at least kept me connected. So when I came back into town late Saturday afternoon, I had some idea of what had transpired. So Matt, I really appreciate your hard work over the last three or four weeks in keeping me connected. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to thank Matt, too. I was just on vacation, but we chatted, and Rob, we had emails flying back and forth, and I really thank them, because I didn't miss a beat. I knew everything that was going on and then some. So thank you all very much. You did a wonderful job for council.
I think we all agree to that, all of us on this dais. They were very, very helpful. All right, city manager, I'm turning it over to you.
Mayor, members of the council, welcome back. Time flies. It doesn't seem like it was five weeks, or actually four weeks in between meetings because of the special meeting we had last week.
I bet your staff does, though.
Staff, several of us had vacations during that time as well, so it worked out well. It was a good summer. Just a couple of announcements. One is, and you already had an opportunity to be addressed by him in an earlier presentation, but wanted to let everyone know that, as was stated, Mark Siemens has been selected as our environmental services manager. He's been with the city since June of 2011, but he, since May of this year, he served as our interim manager after Jerry Postama moved on up to Washington for a director spot up there. But I have to tell you, during the time that Mark has been here, he's really demonstrated a lot of leadership, very resourceful, works well with his team, and it wasn't a slam dunk. He competed with 70 others from around the country and rose to one of the top three finalists, and we're very pleased that he actually did receive this, well-earned. His passion, and I had an opportunity to, some of us had an opportunity to visit in the final round, there's a passion that he has for really providing service, and that's what we, our culture is about, providing service at a very, very high level, and we're confident he'll do that. Not to age him, but he's been doing this for 32 years in management and operations and water, wastewater, water reuse, reverse osmosis, so very technically capable as well. So the specific areas that he'll oversee, water, wastewater, and sanitation. So he's already doing his assignment, or he has started. And just a couple other folks I'd like to recognize, Ruben Valoz, Hector Ortiz, Linda Shapcott, Ray Diaz, Robert Vargas, and Willie Elizondo on Public Works, who assisted in managing their operations while Mark was serving as the interim. So it was a team effort by Public Works, and Mark, congratulations.
Well, okay.
I always give them an opportunity to say words if they want, but I think he's, he looks quite comfortable there. We'll get even with them tomorrow. Just two other quick announcements. One is, if you look right behind the complex here, you notice the communications tower is up. That's a big deal. So that is right behind the 911 Communications Dispatch Center. That's obviously well underway. You can see it actually getting completed right before our eyes. But this is a vital step in, that it's going to ensure that our radio signals provide truly seamless emergency communications. So it's a big milestone. We're still looking at the new center opening in late February, early March. We'll get titled to it before, access to it, and then we'll do the fit-up in FFNE, but that's right around the corner. And then it'll take, like I said, some of those weeks to get our systems installed. Then when we pull the trigger, it's done, and the old one closes. Mayor and council, the last item is just, and you're well aware, that we have public meetings this week on the Sonoran Valley Parkway environmental impact statement draft report. So BLM has scheduled two open houses, and one of them, and it's on the Sonoran Valley Parkway environmental impact study, as I stated before. We want to get the public comment final to the draft report before it's completed. First meeting is actually tomorrow at City Hall, and it's scheduled from 5:30 to 7:30. Presentations start at 6 o'clock. And the second meeting is Thursday, August 22nd, at the Auction Southern Dunes Golf Club in Maricopa, scheduled at the same time, 5:30 to 7:30, with the presentation at 6 o'clock. This is not the 303. This is about the Sonoran Valley Parkway, and that's what this is about, that would connect us to the community of Mobile. Mayor, members of the council, that's all I have for communications.
Can we just highlight the follow-up? We had two people come before us on the lights. I don't know if you want to share anything that you shared with me before the meeting, or how you want to handle this, so.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Zednik, he had talked about who's paying for the lights, was asking that we consider different alternatives. And then the second question was, is to hold information meetings in Estrella, potentially a town meeting prior to council action. What we plan on doing now is, and just to bring council up to speed, on the lights, we, the direction we receive from councils to negotiate with Newland and the HOA, which that meeting is actually in process of being set up. We're anticipating that that will be completed in September, and then from that, it's actually an agreement that would come back before council. So that's the timeline. It was, and the direction we had received from council last time this was presented was to look at the delta between more efficient streetlights as far as their energy costs that the city would pay for our typical standard for streetlight, and then the additional cost for the ornamentals would be borne by the HOA. So that's a direction we're running with right now, and that was a plan we had planned to bring before council. Question is, is it, would it be helpful to have some kind of perhaps informal meetings up in Estrella, or to make sure it's heavily public? up in Estrella, or to make sure it's heavily publicized to try and bring the Estrella residents here? But right now, nothing has been set, and I would encourage, you know, if council has input on that, you know, either now or let us know later.
Is that meeting you're having closed up there? I mean, if somebody up there wanted to go and listen to that meeting, or so...
Initially, it will be closed, because it is really to understand, working on an agreement. So the agreement will absolutely become public, but the nuts and bolts of kind of working through the agreement, that's best with the parties that are directly affected. It would, of course, become public and for public discussion and purview.
Well, I really think, considering we've had a couple issues up in Australia, that we're better off, when you finish, you know, making the agreement, and it could be on the idea, you need to present it to the public for public input. I just, how does everybody else feel? Because I just think that...
I agree.
They brought it before us, and I know it's unusual to do that, you know, but...
My only concern is probably more for the lawyer legal standpoint. I appreciate the open meeting with her, but I'm not sure what role we have in that, because we're not negotiating with the residents, we're negotiating with the owners that own that property. So my concern is, if we get in there and try to negotiate on the recommendation with individual residents there, are we legally getting in the way of those that you're supposed to be negotiating with? It seems to me that the negotiation should be between the residents on what they want and their representative, which is the HOA. Now, we could go there to listen what that discussion is, but I'm not sure what legal role we have in negotiating directly. Correct me if I'm wrong on there, Mr. Lawyer, City Attorney.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I heard something different. I heard that the negotiations between the HOA and the developer would occur with city staff in private.
Right.
Which they normally do. Prior to public consideration, though, I think we heard that, let's see, reach out and get input from the citizens post the draft agreement prior to the meeting and maybe seek some input, but not certainly have...
What I'm suggesting...
...other residents in the negotiation sessions between staff and the HOA and Newland.
But let me ask you this question. If the input is different than what was negotiated, and who you negotiate is the owners of the HOA, how is that going to have an impact? Because we're supposed to be negotiating with the owners of that... You see what I mean? If you open up the negotiations or that input, as if, and correct me if I'm wrong, from a legal standpoint, that there's legitimate input, that they can change that, then it would have to go back to the ones that negotiated, who actually owned the property. Am I missing something?
Certainly, that's how it'd have to happen, but it's, I guess it would be no different than the call to the public when we consider any action item in front of the council. You can certainly consider their input and then make your decision whether or not we want to proceed at that point. But you're going to have to have the agreement of all three parties as to any changes to the draft agreement. So I think it was just an opportunity to have some further outreach, given the public interest and involvement at this point, is what I was hearing.
So, in other words, if you've cut the deal with the developer and the HOA, and they come back with a different recommendation than what that deal is, would they convince them to negotiate different, or we change our position? I mean, you see what I'm kind of...
But that kind of is something that happens all the time. I don't think that's any different than anything else we do.
I just want to make sure legally, we don't get into a position where we're negotiating with somebody...
The three parties to the negotiation will be Newland, the HOA, and the city.
Correct.
And any agreement has to be agreed to by all three of those parties. I think what everyone's asking for is some additional opportunity for public input final to the, prior to the final approval, rather than just at the council meeting in which we consider the actual item.
I understand that, but wouldn't it make more sense to have the feedback from the public to the HOA and Newland before the negotiations happen? Because it seems to me to be counterproductive to first have the negotiations and then come back and find out that their residents aren't in favor of what they negotiated. Am I missing something there? Seems like the cart after the horse.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I'm no attorney, but it seems to me like you're... It seems like it should be the other way around.
I think we can certainly maybe encourage Newland and the HOA to reach out to their residents prior to us having the meeting.
I would certainly, I would do, at least if you approach them on this, as a city, we can see there's some angst on this, and there are people that feel they haven't been able to express how they feel about it. You know, they haven't had that opportunity. You know, I see we've had opportunity here, but, you know, the word gets out, and people that weren't interested in it before are now interested. It's got a whole new group of people looking at it, and it's going to be whatever the three get together, and the HOA is representative of the people. But you have a segment up there that don't feel that way, that they feel they want to be. And you're part of that neighborhood. Why don't you speak up, Sheri?
I think it'd be a good idea, not just in Estrella, but a lot of these other communities, when we have issues that are really highly sensitive, to just have kind of a listening and open house. It doesn't mean they get veto power, you know? If 10 people show up, those 10 people obviously don't get veto power. But I think it'd be good just to publicize and get the information out so that everyone knows and that people are getting the right information. Because I think what happens a lot of times is that a couple people maybe pass along information that's not always correct, and that gets other people upset. And I think it can't hurt, even if you have the agreement done, you can say, this is what we're looking at, we can tweak it, you know, if we all agree, and just have it out there.
And it may be disagree, agree to disagree. I mean, that's the way, but at least they would have that opportunity to feel like they've been heard. Kind of the democratic way, the Constitution way, isn't it? Yes?
I have a question for the attorney. If, in fact, we do put together a town meeting, a town hall, something, we have to notice it. We have to say what's going to be on the agenda, if all of us show up, to be legal. So we're going to have to be really specific on what we're going to talk about. To save, to protect us and to protect them. I mean, it's, gosh.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember.
Good luck.
Yeah. We've done this type of thing before. It's the difference between whether you're having an actual council meeting or whether we're providing a courtesy notification indicating there may be a quorum of the council present. I would certainly anticipate if we decide to go that route, it would probably be a staff-led discussion with the public or open house, and we provide a courtesy notification to the public.
As long as we stay on one subject, you know? I really don't want to go up there and get beat to death on everything, between the retention basins and everything else that's on their mind, and the APS wires, and, you know, if we're going to go talk just about the lights and just about who owns them, wonderful. I'm all for it.
Well, you're always subject to someone getting in there.
I know.
And it's really hard to prevent people.
I know.
They feel like they have a public forum, they've got us there, and they're going to let us have it.
True.
And so I guess that's just part of the game, but it's still, I think...
It's a good idea.
I think we need to do this. Okay, so we have nodding of heads here, right? All right, so you have our direction.
Mayor, members of the council, just to be very specific, one is, as we work with Newland and the HOA, we'll encourage them to get information out to the residents up there. Back to Councilmember Pizzillo's point, the HOA is representing the residents. Second part of it is, is some type of, call it an open-house presentation specific to the signals, so we get the, or excuse me, not signals, the streetlights, so we get the right information out there. So everyone is aware of the facts, and we may not get total agreement on those, but at least it gives them an opportunity to learn more about it and express their opinions. We will then bring that back to council, as far as a summary of that open house, if you will.
Vice Mayor?
Just one more comment while you're on the track of getting the information out there. I've had three people come up to me about the mobile, the Sonoran, and ask when we're... It's nice that we're moving forward and building the road. I think there's a misconception out there that this is a process of building the road. And I don't know how we get that clarified, but this is the preliminary process to get right of ways, to make sure you have the right, you know, the right way to put the road in. But no money's been budgeted to build this road. So I think it's important we get, I don't know how we get that message out, but I've had several people come up and says, you're building the road in Mobile. And I said, no, this is the preliminary, just to get approval for the right of way to have where the road is going. So I think we need to reach out and make sure that we get that understanding, because I've had people come up to me and specifically say that we're building that road, so...
Thank you, and that's easily something that we can put in focus in other communications. And this is just first step, just to that point. We still have to get rights away from, or not rights away, EIS through the state. We also have to deal with private landowners, so right now it's just BLM, Bureau of Land Management at the federal level. And then it goes into longer-term design, construction, and it is not in our five-year capital improvement plan, any of it at this point.
Joanne?
Brian, I had a couple of questions. This evening, when we had the Sunbelt Holdings new development come in, it sparked a question in my mind that I would like some education on. And that is, when we talk about affluent water, affluent, I don't say affluent water, affluent water, that in the past, like, for example, in canyon trails, when they wanted to have it for some of their HOA areas and stuff like that, we didn't have the infrastructure there. And so as we go forward in some of these new developments, maybe this is the cart before the horse, but what I don't understand is, is this something that new developments can, since they're brand-new, putting in the infrastructure, that the, that is part of the new development of putting in something for the future for affluent water? And so I need help understanding how that process works, because I'm just thinking, you know, water is one of the big issues we've been talking about the last few months, and I just don't know the process of how that goes. So if you could help me with that.
I think that's a good question, and along with that, explain the infrastructure, because it sounds so simple.
And I just...
And, you know, just put a pipe in there, and you can get that through there, no problem at all. And I think that's the mystery that people don't understand, and I think that's the story that needs to be told, so everybody knows why we can't do this in the communities at this time, and what it would cost, and where, I mean, there's so much to the infrastructure. Now, we talk about what we have to do for our city. We don't have the infrastructure in our city. We've got to get busy, we've got to pass, we've got to give money, we've got to get going on the infrastructure. It's not flashy, but we need it. That's part of infrastructure. And we have a long ways to go before we can even get that pipe in there. And so I agree with you. I think that'd be great if the council was educated in that direction.
Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, absolutely. And we will be looking at different design guidelines, or engineering guidelines, I should say, to include purple pipe as it ties to affluent, and what's perhaps the better way of using the affluent for recharge, for credits. I can't get into details, or the attorney next to me will yank me back, because it's not posted. But we do plan on bringing information, a lot of information over time on infrastructure, to include transportation, water, wastewater, affluent, road maintenance, et cetera. So a lot of this will be in front of you over the next several months.
My other question, between being gone to Boston and then Chicago, I've been gone about five weeks, and I appreciate Matt and Rob and the information that they sent, or did not send, because they knew that I was overloaded as it was. But one thing that I know has continued for the last few months that I have not heard an update on or a final conclusion is the orchard, an issue with that. And I'd certainly like to have an update on what's going on, please.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, we do have an update that we can provide to you. That will come from me. We're not prepared tonight, but we certainly, that will be an update that we'll be providing, and I would tell you in the next week and a half.
It's been a process.
Thank you.
Yes, Molly?
I have one question for the city manager. I noticed that the signs are gone from the mall site. I know you know that I started this probably the first night I was sworn in on council that I wanted to get signs. And I went over to Prasada, to the empty vacant lot, and took pictures of the beautiful sign they have there, and I have it on my iPad. And I came back, and city manager Fishbox started to work with whomever to get those signs up. And at one time, we did have two signs. They weren't very pretty, and I complained about the signs, because they were so drab, and I was told that was because that was our design guidelines, that they couldn't have the bright colors and the beautiful turquoise like they have Prasada. But now, we don't have anything. So did anyone report that they were stolen?
We had a thought today, who has it?
Councilmember Campbell, yes. It has been reported by some on council. The signs still, there were two signs that were erected for the mall.
Right.
One faces McDowell Road. That one is still there, at least as I heard of last week. The one that's missing, the two posts are still there.
On Bullard.
The one on Bullard.
Uh-huh.
We have absolutely notified Maysrich, and we're actually meeting with them, what, Wednesday. And I guarantee you, we'll reinforce that message.
Thank you very much.
That we have made that request to replace that sign.
I think they misunderstood our guidelines, because it was in pastel, the printing was in pastel.
It was, yeah, awful.
Pastel, kind of mini-green turquoise, and you really couldn't see it. So if we could kind of educate them on what really our sign ordinance says, okay?
Thank you.
Any other thing? All right, great. Well, just so you know, the next meeting will be a work session. It'll start at 5:30, and that's on 8/26. And then that same evening, immediately following the work session, we'll have a regular session. So, okay? You're welcome. I'm going to... Meeting adjourned.